This is a Stoughton City Council meeting. First order of business is the roll call.
Porzma?
Here.
Caravelo?
Here.
Doom?
Here.
Eileen?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Hunt?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Lagaki?
Here.
Mijaski?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Jimacher?
Here.
And Tikowski?
Here.
All right, we have twelve Alders present.
Excellent, thank you Holly. Minutes and reports are in the packet. Next item is public comment period. Is there anyone that would like to speak at the public comment period? Harry Nun will go on to. Pardon me? Harry Nun will go on to. Communications and presentations. Are there any communications from council members? All right, Harry Nun, I just wanted to offer my condolences to the family of Bob Burrell. Bob passed away recently and he was a Stoughton resident for many years and really was responsible for the cable channel. And, you know, played a leadership role in Stoughton for a long time, so. I had the chance to see Bob a couple of years ago at Riverside Cemetery when they were honoring Officer Paul Craby. And, you know, he was a very. Very. Leader in the community and, you know, quite a man. And some of you may have known him more than I did, but certainly had most respect for Bob and his family.
And now, Your Honor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could I ditto that too? I went to the service, I was one of the honor guards for our local. Local American Legion. It was a great service and it was really honoring. And so he, family was there, there were probably thirty or forty people and the actual. The actual service was right at the grave site, so it was a great service. He was, he was a. Besides everything else, he was, he was the commander of our post for a number of years, so. I ditto what you say, Your Honor, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you Sid. And other person, Harley, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was wondering if we had any details yet on what the latest federal COVID relief bill would mean for the city? What opportunities we have there?
I could tell you, we touched on it a bit at finance. Jamin and I have a webinar with Baker Tilly tomorrow. I had one session that I sat in with League of Municipalities where they outlined some of the basic components. Right now, there's still quite a bit of unanswered questions. Anything you want to add to that, Director Friedel?
No, it's, that's a great question, Alder Harley, it's, it's still really early in the process. The second it came out, I basically called one of the partners at Baker Tilly to find out, you know, how much? How much time do we have on this? How quickly do we need to make decisions? And they said there's plenty of time. What we do know is we have till the end of 2024 to spend all of the money. So tentatively, the plan going forward is to just start having conversations internally to kind of weed out. Good projects, bad projects, what have you, and then start bringing them through the proper committees. And ultimately onto council in terms of how the money should be spent. So more to come. You know, we're relying on the expert like Baker Tilly, Ellers, those types of companies to kind of guide us through this. And as soon as we know more, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Are there any other communications from council members? And then we have the one on there about the municipal revenue obligation release. Who wants to touch on that one?
Do you want me to do that, Jamin?
If you're volunteering, go ahead.
Okay, sure. There may be a short memo from, about this in the packet from Jamin. So you, some of you may recall that the development agreement between the city and Ford Development Group regarding the commercial phase of the Kettle Park West Development included a provision that allows for or requires the issuance of a municipal revenue obligation to the developer to pay for the cost of site grading work up to $550,000. That municipal revenue obligation is, it's what we call a pay-as-you-go TIF obligation, so it's a TIF. TIF-funded. Grant to the developer to pay for site grading work on a pay-as-you-go basis, out of tax increment generated by the district. And only after a number of other costs are paid each year. So that municipal revenue obligation was assigned to the city by the developer to secure the developer's obligation to either dedicate four acres of land to the city for the. For the park in the residential phase, or failing that to pay the city a fee in lieu of parkland dedication. And the agreement provides that once the conveyance of the land to the city and the annexation of that land to the city are completed, then the assignment to that municipal revenue obligation terminates and the. And the MRO can be issued to the developer. So we are basically almost at the end of that process. The annexation of that parcel has been completed. The developer is working on just the final steps necessary to convey that four acres of parkland to the city. We think that will happen soon. And once that has occurred. It will be, we will be required to issue the municipal revenue obligation to the developer. And so this is only on the agenda tonight for informational purposes to make you aware that we've, you know, passed certain milestones and that we will be issuing that municipal revenue obligation pursuant to the agreements that have already been approved by the council. There's no action required, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you Matt. There are no questions, we'll go into the consent agenda. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes that are in the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is ordinance seven of 2021 for a second reading. And this one comes from Public Works, Alder Person Mijaski. All right, did we lose Alder Person Mijaski?
I was muted.
That's okay.
Just give me one second here.
All right. It's ordinance seven of 2021.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance. Seven of 2021 amending section sixty-six dash nine zero four. Parents eighth of Stoughton Municipal Code, Public Works recommended four to zero, and I still move.
Is there a second? All right, Holly, take your pick. I think it was a tie. And other person, Mijaski?
Well, this is. A. Basically a modification to ordinance to encourage natural. Naturally shaped detention retention bonds.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is ordinance eight of 2021, this is a second reading from CACP, which is Community Affairs Council Policy. And this one would be coming from Alder Person Harley.
Sorry, Bob.
I heard you for a second.
Did you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, let's. Okay. So this is. Ordinance eight of 2021 amending section two dash six seven of the municipal code regarding appointments. This would add up to two non-city council Stoughton residents to each of the standing committees with the exception of the personnel committee. As we talked about last meeting, this would get a little bit more diversity in the committee appointments. More voices with input on these topics and. This is in line with what a lot of our surrounding communities do. The approach varies, but. Not by any means strange to see. I will move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right, I heard a second. And any more discussion?
I'd like to speak.
Okay, Alder Kristen Tikowski.
I support, I support this. I also moved to amend the motion. This would be my first amendment of three. And the amendment would add, right after the phrase, up to two cities of Stoughton residents. Would add from different districts.
So in other words, the, the community members would have to be from separate districts, so we don't potentially be overloaded with two community members and one council member all from one district.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second Joyce's amendment.
Okay, any more thoughts about that Joyce? Before we open it up?
Yeah. Really, I think you summed it up well. It's just mainly for that single purpose.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders on the amendment?
So should we say something for each standing committee? There'll be one, no more than one representative from each district instead of just. Because you're talking about all the. All the, all the. Committees, and so do we have to clarify that at all?
It really just means that your two community residents who are appointed cannot be from the same district.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you already is talking about standing committees.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the standing committee part of it, because the other committees, you know, the. You know, they're not, they're not the same as the standing committee. The other, the other thought that I had was, what if, what if the, either the mayor or we cannot find people from each district to fill that position? Is that going to be problematic? In the, in the event that like one and three can have a, can find a, a member for the standing committee and there are no volunteers or the mayor's not able to locate one, what happens in that kind of situation?
Easy to fix. Just add the verbiage that would say whenever possible.
You can do that, or, you know, I could, I could make the appointment and the council could always waive the rules and, and confirm.
Yeah, you're correct on that, Mayor, but the simplest way is to just say that it's wherever possible, then you're covered.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about not having anybody step up to the plate.
Okay, so.
Sid, I guess, Sid, so if two people from District One stepped up, but nobody from any of the other districts stepped up, you would be okay with the two being from District One?
No. Not necessarily. I mean, I'm just saying if there's one from District One, one from District Three that step up and we can't find anybody from two and four, then.
But it's only two people, it's only two people per standing committee. So only two districts are ever going to be representative on each standing committee.
Joyce is saying one from one, one from two, and one from.
No, no, she's just saying it just, the two that are representative can't be from the same district. So you could have one and three, two and four.
I understand now, okay, if that's, if that's the intent, I think I'm for it.
Okay.
Okay. So any other questions on the amendment then, or comments?
Well, I guess I wanted to say, I think maybe the idea of going forward with waiving the rules is a good option because whenever possible is very open. I don't know if it's open to interpretation. I'm just asking.
My comment on it would be, no, it wouldn't really be open to interpretation because the mayor would have have the information there in front of him and, well, I trust that the mayor is not going to try and stack any of the committees. So if, if that, if that's your concern, then yeah, leave it and we just waive the rules. But I was just looking for an easy way out, and the easiest way out is to just simply add that verbiage.
I guess Regina pointed out at the last meeting that we won't, may not always have this mayor. So I guess I had that in mind too.
That's fine.
Yeah, if we had, if we had more than two, there would be an automatic stacking of that. Of that, because then there'd be, there'd be, you know, the, the, the non-council members could. Could be more, we have more votes than council members, so.
The thing, the thing is, is that this, by doing this, by adding these two citizens, you are already stacking it. Because if you're, if you have one person from the third and then you have a citizen from the third, you're stacked. So.
Yeah, that's, that's a concern, that's a concern.
It's, 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 and that's one of the concerns that I have, you know, I, we're elected people, we're supposed to be doing this job. I'm still not comfortable with this. I'd still, I still would like to see the sunset, put into it, you know, run it for a year and see if it works. And that, that's an amendment I'll make when Joyce is done.
Okay.
Yeah, because we have talked about that too.
Focus on the amendment. Let's, let's get through the amendment and then we'll take the next steps. So right now, the amendment is to. The two community members from separate districts. So is there any more questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And any opposed to the amendment? Okay, so that motion carries, so now we have a new motion on the table with the amendment. Are there any other amendments?
I have a second amendment.
Okay.
And that is, it comes right after the amendment we just voted on, after from different districts. We would say, who are not immediate family members of the city council members appointed to serve on the same standing committee? So not relatives, that means not relatives of council members on the same committee.
I believe that's already in our rules, is it not, Mayor?
Not that, not that I'm aware of, I'm not aware that that's in the council rules.
Okay, because I know my wife was asked to be on the library board and was told that she couldn't because I was on council.
Well, they have separate rules.
Okay, that's right, library board difference, yes.
I would second, I would second the amendment as presented by Joyce.
Okay, and then anything else you want to add, Joyce, before we open it up?
No, I think, I think it says something pretty clearly.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this amendment?
Yeah, Joyce, how, I mean, if we already said that they have to be from different districts. Then how would, oh, you're saying as a separate from a council member, not the same people on there?
Right, so you know, a nephew, for example.
Well, how far are you going to?
Yeah.
Your family, I mean, this is a small community, obviously, we're not going to get anybody on there because a lot of people are related.
Yeah, it's just.
What would you, what would you suggest?
I wouldn't say only your immediate family, your, your kids.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's actually what I was thinking of, was immediate family.
But even the kids is kind of hard, I mean, why? You know, if they're adults and they're. I mean, why would we want, I guess, I'm just throwing it out there. I can see a husband and wife, but why would we, if they're not in the same household anymore, they're adults and they moved elsewhere. Why would we want to prohibit somebody wanting to be involved in our city decisions and discussions, because that's why we brought it to the. To you guys to change to begin with.
Yeah, I, my, my comment would be that spouse is definitely something that you would want to eliminate. Because, well, naturally, you'd be sitting talking about it and that, that's not good. If you were to have it so that a child, adult child, was on another committee, the committee that you're not on, then that would make sense to allow that. But not on the same committee. I think that's what.
I think that's what this does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Immediate, immediate family on the same committee.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I think we're good there. I think, you know, I think part of it is, is it can be conflicting and distracting if, if you were to have a member of your immediate family serve on a committee with you. But certainly if that immediate family member had a desire and the expertise to serve on another committee, I would definitely consider them.
Are we defining what we mean by immediate family? How far immediate we are? Or are we just talking about same address or household?
I think immediate family is, can be interpreted as. Wife and, and non-adult children.
Rachel, can I just jump in here quick? On the issue of immediate family, if we don't define it specifically in the ordinance, then one way to look at it would be to look at the dictionary definition. And Black's Legal Dictionary defines immediate as meaning your parents, your siblings, and your children.
I'm fine with that, I don't know about the rest of you.
I'd be fine with me.
That seems fine to me, too.
Could we add spouse?
Yeah, I think, hold on. And spouse, that was the one I missed. That's, that would be included if we fall back on, on a legal definition of immediate.
Okay, good.
All right, thank you, Rachel. Any other questions or comments on this amendment?
Say, as long as people can't be connected through Kevin Bacon, everything should be all right.
It's only seven degrees of separation. Right.
All right, all in favor of the amendment, say aye. Any opposed? That amendment carries, so we're back to the original motion with the two past amendments. Are there any other amendments?
I have one more, and thank you all for your patience. This comes at the very end. And it's, it's the final edition, and it would add, no citizen committee member shall serve on the same committee for more than three consecutive years. It basically puts a term limit on this.
All right, is there a second on that amendment?
I'd second that.
All right, and go ahead, Joyce, you're on a roll.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not tied to the value of, of the number of years, but it just, I guess I couldn't envision someone serving, you know, as long as ten years, and, and maybe they would be a wonderful contributor, but it does, it sort of defeats the purpose of this good idea in the first place, which was to have a variety, so. Three years is, you know, an alder's term, so. It's also seems sufficient for somebody to learn what, what the job is all about too, so that's it.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that one?
Does this affect the utilities committee?
No, it's not a standing committee.
Gotcha.
It would be Public Safety, Public Works.
Yep.
Finance, CACP. And what am I missing? Parking and Rec. Does not include personnel. Because we chose to purposely not include personnel just because of the sensitivity issue.
And was that, is that, was that in the, in the, in the body of this, son?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question.
It's the exception to personnel, okay.
Go ahead, Alder Person Lagaki.
Are there term limits? Or let's say an alder ends up serving like four or five terms as an alder, so they've been on for twelve or fifteen years. Are they limited by the number of years they can serve on a committee consecutively?
No.
No.
And I'm raising the question, I love Joyce's idea, but the whole idea is to have good community involvement along with elected alders. I'm wondering, do we need to look at this question for alders?
I think if you want to take that to the committee, you can certainly do that.
If I could comment on that?
Sure.
I am, I am one who is, is vehemently opposed to term limits of any kind, period. We have term limits, they're called elections. We're, we're having a hard enough time getting people to run for office. I don't know where, where you figure that you're going to get people to come up and volunteer to do this. I honestly don't think you're gonna, you're gonna have much luck with it, or are people sticking with it? I hope I'm wrong. I hope I am, it would be nice to have that, that additional input. But I would not be in favor of putting a term limit on, on their ability to, to serve or on our, on the council's ability to serve.
And I would, I would say, you know, I'm okay with the three years. But by the way it's written, these are going to be one-year terms and the mayor or the council could choose not to appoint or confirm them. If there was an issue. If there was an issue, I would hope that if somebody was on a committee for multiple years, they would consider running for council. But, you know, that's not a guarantee, it's just a hope.
So, so I have a question, and that is, what about removal? Because I think council members can be removed for good cause, but I, what about these folks?
Rachel, you want me to handle that one? I think you're muted, Rachel. Who's going to handle that?
If you know it off the top of your head, feel free. Otherwise, I was going to open up the ordinances here and take a look.
I, I believe I know the answer, which is the statutes provide that in the city appointed positions are subject to the, subject to removal in the same manner as the, the appointment. So I believe that the council would have the authority to remove an appointed person from a committee if the council chose to do that.
What cause would, would start that process, Matt?
I don't believe there's any cause required. I think it's a, it's a, they're serving at the pleasure of the council in a sense.
So if the chair or any of the members felt that this person was not being, you know, maybe they didn't show up for meetings or whatever. They could just bring this to council as, as a resolution to remove them?
Correct. I believe that is correct.
All right, are there any more questions or comments on the amendment, which is to have basically a three-year limit on it?
I guess I won't see a supporting that, because I think, like you said, we get to decide every year, and there's sometimes there's big projects that are going on in a certain committee, and it's, it is good to have continuity going forward to get things done. And so I guess I won't support that one.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Here and none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Hi.
And those opposed?
No.
No.
I believe the noes have it. We can do a roll call if you prefer.
Thank you, everyone.
Two out of three is not bad.
No, no, much appreciated.
Yeah.
That's what Meatloaf said.
All right, and thanks for, thanks for the, the work that you did ahead of time, Joyce, it's appreciated. Are there any other amendments?
I would like to add just a sunset clause on this, so that we look at this again next year at this time.
I second that amendment.
All right, there's a motion to second. You want to elaborate, Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, it's just that I think that this is something that we really need to take a look at and, and see just how, how it's working out. You, I guess you could all hear my skepticism of it, and, and I just would feel much more comfortable knowing that we're going to be able to take a look at this and, and give it a yea or nay a year from now and saying, yeah, this is a great idea, or it just really hasn't worked out. So it's, I think it's, I think it's appropriate and warranted.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I just had a, a question. I wonder, Alder Jensen, if, because they probably wouldn't even start until after the election in April, so I don't know if we want to look at May 1st of 2022, if you'd be okay with that, or if you, if you want to just stick with the date, the approval on the resolution.
It would, it would be, as long as we would, the C A C P would take a look at it again prior to the reorganization of April of 2022. And then they could bring it to council for that first meeting in April, and we could approve it or not.
Okay. All right, and I know there was some talk at the committee about, you know, reviewing it anyway, but if you want to have that right in there, but certainly can do that.
I, I would, I would prefer to have it in, in codified in writing.
Yeah, so what I'm wondering, and this is a question for Matt or Rachel, if, if we put it in the ordinance, are we going to have to, at that point, we'll have to take action to either remove it from the ordinance or to, you know, change the ordinance? So either way, we'll have to look at the ordinance again next year, right?
Well, I guess this is where my experience with the legislature and local government is maybe being conflated, how I would see that, Matt, you can tell me if I'm wrong here, but the legislature has an option for putting in non-statutory provisions that wouldn't get published. Is that an option in an ordinance?
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, so then it would probably need to be published as part of the ordinance and reviewed next time around.
Right, so, and, and so how I'm understanding that is if you actually build in a sunset provision, what, I understand that to mean that the ordinance itself will terminate at that time that you establish as the, the time that it sunsets, meaning without any further action by the council, this ordinance language that you're adopting tonight, well, actually, you need to be more clear, Alder Jensen, on exactly what you're sunsetting. Are you sunsetting all of section 2-67? Because that goes beyond simply the appointment of, of residents in addition to council members. So the, the language that would be sunset, it would need to be specifically identified, and that language would essentially terminate as of the sunset date that's established.
Yes, and that's, that's the way I understand it, is that a sunset would terminate unless, unless the council voted to eliminate that. And that would have to, if it, if it has to be on as, as an ordinance, it would, it would have to go through the first and second reading, or we would have to waive the second reading and go ahead and then make it permanent.
Could we call that out by saying the changes made by ordinance aid of 2021 will be reviewed and bring it to 2022, something like that?
Well, I'll let Matt offer his advice on that if he could.
That, I don't think that's workable, so, I mean, I think, Alder Jensen, you need to, I, let's, let's just deal with your amendment. I believe your intent is to, to amend section 2-67 or to, to add an amendment to the, to the main motion here, which is to make these changes to 2-67, to add additional language at the end. This is where it gets complicated, that would say that that the, you know, these provisions of this section now that allow for the appointment of non-alder person residents would terminate as of a space, a specified date. But it's a little messy, the language is a little messy. We need, we need the actual language.
Then I guess what I would do is, I will trust that the C A C P committee will do its, do its job as it says it would and review this come one year from now, and I'll withdraw my, my amendment.
Okay. Sounds good. So right now, we have a motion with two amendments that passed. Are there any final amendments? Okay, here and none. So we have the main motion with the amendments to have the community members from separate districts and not be immediate family members on the same committee. Any questions about the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Just wanted to say thanks to everyone for the thoughtful additions and giving us a lot of thought to make it as good as we can.
Okay, was there anybody opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. I know that was one that I'd, I'd wanted to, you know, see get passed, and I think that, you know, I'll probably be getting some phone calls tomorrow, tomorrow already. I have a few people that contacted me that are interested in following this. So I think this will be a, a, a good thing, and I'm, I'm excited to have some new voices.
Well, like, like I said, I'm, I, I have my reservations, but I'm hopeful that this will work, and I can, and, and my reservations would be unfounded.
Well, and I trust that you'll be following, and if you see something that's not working, you'll, you'll let us know. All right, next item is ordinance nine of 2021, and this is a first reading from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, thank you. As you said, this is a first reading, ordinance nine of 2021, amending chapter 78 of the zoning code as follows, amend section 78-611, peel and remove, oh, you scooched that back up there? Thanks. Repeal and remove table 78-611 and repeal and recreate appendix B of the Stoughton Municipal Code.
All right, and you want to walk us through this one?
I'm, this is really just relating to updating the landscaping tree species list that Tree Commission has been working on, and hopefully, Plan Director Schill can enlighten us as to find points, because this is nowhere near anything of my area of expertise.
I'm certainly available if there's any questions. The Tree Commission spent some time really looking at the species of trees and really taking a look at what was appropriate for the, the standards within the zoning code requirements. And so this really is, is their, their body of work, and we appreciate their efforts in doing so.
Yeah, and I would add that Tree Commission member Mitch Bergerson came to the, the Plan Commission and really did an excellent job of laying out the changes and kind of the rationale behind it, and I found it very educational for me. And I certainly, in the same position that Alder Person Caravelo is, is not exactly in my wheelhouse, but certainly appreciate the work that was brought forward to us. And this is on, for a first reading, anybody have any questions or anything that you want us to discuss before the next meeting?
I very much enjoyed having the botanical names and common names in them, for sure.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, and the next item is also coming from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, thank you. This is Resolution 31 of 2021, approving a conditional use permit request by Danny Senf for Pizza Hut at 1400 U.S. Highway 51-138, Stoughton, Wisconsin, with a site, parentheses, site plan stated 3-3 of 2021, and I so move.
Second.
A motion in the second, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is a C U P to request to essentially renovate a vacant building at that address, 1400 U.S. Highway 51, which was its last use, I believe, was a restaurant with a drive-through for use as a restaurant with a drive-through.
Any questions or comments on this one? None, all in favor of the motion, say aye. And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R 32, and this one comes from Public Works. Alder Person Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Resolution 32 of 2021, review and approval of the city's annual storm water permit report. W P D S permit number WI-S 058416-4, and recommended for approval. I so move.
And there's a second by Alder Person Hunt, Alder Person Mieske.
This is a report that comes out every year on what the city does for complying with state regulations for stormwater. And it's kind of interesting if you read the reports, and basically, we are removing lots of things from the water before it hits the river.
All right, thank you. Director Schill, anything you want to add? I know your department spent a lot of time and effort on this.
Yeah, obviously, there's a annual report that has to be put together with a culmination of data that we compile throughout the year related to the activities and improvements that are made within our facility and sites. And this year, there were some permit modifications that were necessary for reporting. Those are inclusive in the, the updated material that's in your packet. At our Public Works Committee, we actually had a presentation from a consultant, our consultants from Strand that walked through some of the, and highlighted some of the activities that were accomplished in 2020 and annually, as, as outlined in our annual report. So we're happy to have the report behind us, and we think it's suitable for submission to the B N R.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, here and none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, thank you. Next item is R 33 of 2021, and this one is coming from Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. R 33 2021 Resolution authorizing the city finance director to reclassify $70,000 currently assigned to liability loss insurance in the city's fund balance to the unassigned fund balance. So moved.
Second.
And this is a second by Alder Person Jensen, Alder Person Schumacher.
So just something that had been in the budget labeled as, as this liability insurance loss fund, and rather than keeping it as an assigned balance, just to reclassify that over into the unassigned fund balance. So not really going anywhere, just changing the nameplate.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Director Freel?
No, that, that pretty well covers it. This is just, again, if you think about financial statements on the balance sheet, this is all part of, in the real world, what we would call retained earnings. In the municipal world, it's called fund balance, and as you may recall, we kind of measure our financial health against our unassigned fund balance number. And after some researches, we were closing out the books this year, we, we saw this $70,000. Nobody knew what it was. Baker Tilly couldn't track it down. Director Gillingham said she didn't know what it was for. So rather than tying up funds unnecessarily to the assigned fund balance, we may as well just move it out.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Here and none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is R 35 of 2021, and this one is coming from Finance Committee as well.
So we're doing R 34 of 2021.
Oh, did I skip it?
Yep, you were on 35.
All right, let's try that.
We're doing R 34.
It's still coming from Finance.
Yep, R 34 of 2021, the resolution to forgive the amounts advanced to the City of Stoughton redevelopment authority from the City of Stoughton totaling $66,574. So move. redevelopment authority from the City of Stoughton totaling $66,574. So moved.
Second.
A second by, I think it was Alder Person Doom, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, so the approximately $67,000 was to the RDA in 2015. And this one is, it ultimately is, uh, it's not a cash transaction between the, the two funds. Uh, but this then, so this doesn't have any impact then on the unassigned fund balance. Uh, this will also eliminate any other, uh, inquiries by the auditing firms for having these types of of assigned far, you know, fund balance advances hanging out there.
All right. Anything you want to add, Director Freel?
Um, yeah, just to, to clarify a few things, um, as, as Alder Schumacher said, this is basically a non, non-cash transaction. The reason we're, we're taking care of it this year again is because uh, when you, when you have inter-fund advances, um, on the balance sheet in this case party and the, the city's general fund, Moody's always asks about them and they kind of score them negatively. Um, and unfortunately, the RDA doesn't have its own source of revenue to ever pay this back. So it's kind of unfortunate in the, in the fact that it even occurred back in 2015. I think it might've just been an oversight um, in closing out the books. Um, and the, the city's bottom line this year can handle this write-off. Um, again, it's already classified differently within the fund balance. You're not going to see an impact um, in terms of, you know, the unassigned fund balance measurement. You will see this flow through the income statement, but again, the bottom line can handle it. And once we clear this up, we, we just won't let the RDA kind of run this advance going forward.
All right. Any questions or comments from Alders on this one? Here are none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. All right, it's Stoughton Utilities time. Um, the next five of them, I think are from Stoughton Utilities in no particular order here, but the first one will be R 35 of 2021. And Alder Person Jensen. You're muted, Greg.
Probably for a good reason. R 35 2021, approval of the fiber optics agreement, uh, and grant of indefeasibility, right of use. An IRU between the City of Stoughton and TDS Meticon. And I would move for approval.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Schumacher, Alder Person Jensen.
I am going to ask if Jill is still with us, if she could, uh, jump in on this. Her expertise is much greater than mine.
Thank you, Greg. Um, I guess the one thing that's important to understand with this agreement is this is not like TDS coming to your home and providing you with high-speed internet. What this agreement is, is actually tying all of our sites together so that we've got committed, dedicated, as fast as the speed of light communication between those facilities. We have SCADA systems, um, that operate basically all of our infrastructure for various different reasons, but basically it creates this awareness of the health of the system at any given time. Right now, we use radio communications to actually communicate back and forth. And there's oftentimes where we have lost communications, we'll get a number of alarms, particularly on our electric side where we've lost communication. This actually would eliminate this, that issue. The other important piece of this is it's completely secure. It's dedicated fiber 100% for our use. No one else uses those strands and they're dedicated. And so there's no security issues. Also, um, a big important piece of this is we look at more of our physical security. There's no real way for us right now to add security cameras, um, at our sites, which is going to be a requirement, particularly on the electric side as we get more and more threats that have been coming to the electric industry. So this is dedicated fiber completely for understanding and keeping kind of physical awareness of our sites. Um, a good example is if, you know, uh, we lose a circuit, that information will come back. Or if we've got, um, voltage issues, that information comes back to us. Another good example is we had a water main break, um. Want to see this was during the construction of, it was work that was being done on Main Street. We recognized a significant water main break, but then we got an alarm through our SCADA system. Fortunately, the communication did work. Letting us know that the water tower was starting to reduce in its level. Like letting us know that this is a significant water main break that we need to isolate immediately or we could have pressure issues within our system. Really, this agreement kind of came out of, um, TDS looking to actually co-locate. They've got a communications node on one of our well sites. Took that opportunity to start this discussion, negotiations with them for the dark fiber. Through those discussions and negotiations, we arrived at the $180,000 as far as that, you know, the cost upfront. And then it is $8,000 annually for maintenance. To kind of put that into perspective, um, if we were to build this, we believe it'd be $1.2 to $2 million. We did some additional research, um, looking at Stephen's point. Right now, if they've got actually kind of a community, um, dark fiber system that they actually, um, charge out. It would be $400 for any site with two strands or $500, excuse, sorry, $500 for any site that had four strands monthly and over 20 years would be 1.8 million dollars. Um, also TDS has an agreement with another utility to provide, again, single point, point-to-point. Their actually monthly charges is $6,400. That's their grandfather charge to 77,000 a year. The new charge that they have come up with is 16,500. So what we're able to get over the 20-year term is something that will provide basically greater awareness, greater security for us. Um, and really is at a reasonable price. Do you have any questions about that information?
Jill, will these be buried or above ground cables?
They will be a combination. Each site is, there's a ring basically where we have the four strands and there is some radial feeds and with two strands and it'll be a combination of, of overhead and underground.
You know, I see that, like it's, uh, they say it's either one or two strands that are in there. Do you know how many fibers they plan to pack per strand? Did they indicate that or not?
They did. Um, where we have four strands, they actually have 144 pairs there. Where we have the two strands, the they said the minimum that they would ever put out is 24 strands whenever they're constructing. Um, we've actually reviewed the number of strands we're getting and we actually have ones that'll provide redundancy for us. So we feel like from a build-out standpoint, we've got enough strands to, you know, look us out 20 years and beyond.
Okay, I was just curious as to, um, I mean, these, these cables do get unfortunately caught. Now, I wouldn't say really often, but on occasion they do. And what that would put, uh, what kind of redundancy would be built in there so that you don't lose communication with the sites that you're intending?
Absolutely. And that's a very good point. Um, in where we've got the ring, which most of our major facilities of concern, there is a few exceptions, just because in which way we can construct this, there's four pairs, but it creates a ring. So we'll actually, you know, kind of like the idea of a radial feed, you cut that off, you've lost all power. We suspect that, you know, how this is going to operate in the ring is we should, should not necessarily lose communications with the way the ring is designed. Um, if there is a radio break, yep, we could lose communications there. We, to your point, it doesn't happen very often. We are consistently with our radio, you know, with actually sending these communications through radio, we lose them fairly often. So we feel like this is a much more reliable system. The other benefit of the $8,000 annually that we will pay, it will cover all maintenance, um, repairs and actually locating. And we figured, you know, from our own experience with locating utilities, we feel the location cost of locating these through Digger's Hotline will be covered even with the $8,000 alone.
Okay, that's where I was going with the number of fibers per bundle because I know, of course, if you have more, more fibers in there, it takes them a lot longer to splice that connection back together.
Absolutely.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments from council members on this?
I just have one and that is, I hope we're not stuck with the original cable guy on this one.
So that I don't believe so. And that if these are, if these are only dark fibers that they're putting in there, does that mean we're going to have to pay them in Bitcoin?
It's not even late. Any other?
It's spring fever, I think.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
No.
All right, here are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries.
Here I abstain on that vote.
Sure. One abstention. We got it. All right, next one is R 36, Alder Person Jensen.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. That's resolution 36 2021, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the write-off of Stoughton Utilities delinquent account balance and invoices deemed uncollectible as of December 31st, 2020. And I would move for approval.
And a second?
Second.
Second, Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Jensen.
Uh, yes, this, uh, annual, uh, process, uh, these are, uh, funds that, uh, the utilities company or utilities have, uh, spent a lot of time trying to collect, uh, and it's deemed that they're, are, they are uncollectible for, uh, a number of reasons, uh, depth or, uh, whatever. Um, anyways, uh, I believe it was 14,000, I've done there, yeah, $14,950. And, uh, I would move that we approve. It was a 5-0 vote, I believe, in our, in our meeting.
Yep. Um, so we have a motion and a second on this one. Um, anything you want to add, Director Leece?
I don't. I think that Greg did an excellent job covering it. Um, one question I know that usually comes up is the car versus pole or truck versus pole. There's a situation where our public car ran into our pole and there was damage. Um, usually these situations are either there is no insurance, there is just unable to collect or we actually have, um, these happen and the, after the investigation that the police, you know, we never were able to figure out who actually hit our pole and created that damage.
All right. Any questions or council members? Here are none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right. Nobody opposed this motion carries. All right. Now the moment we've been waiting for, lead service lines. Which one did you want to start with, Jill?
Um, Mayor, we can start with any of them. I'm just wondering if it would be okay to start off with a presentation, um, kind of walk through the multitude of things with this project.
Go right ahead. The floor is yours.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Is it possible that I'm able to share my screen?
It is.
Okay, if I can just figure out how to do it. Ooh.
I think that Holly might have to give it to you.
Okay.
You have it.
Perfect. Thank you. From beginning. Okay, so I just want to kind of go through, I guess, all the aspects of the project really from the very beginning. Um, don't want to spend too much time because I know some of this is going to be redundant to you, what you've already heard previously, but I think it's kind of a good point to kind of, kind of reflect a little bit and highlight kind of where we're at. So as we talked through in the past, you know, there's a significant health impact of lead, particularly for small children. But these are long-term impacts. Um, you know, a child that is exposed to high levels of lead will have these issues throughout their life. Water is only actually a small part of where you could ultimately, you know, get lead into your system. But it's still an important part because lead is such a health concern, you know, particularly at brain, hormones, stomach, kidneys, bones. There's just a multitude of systems within the human body that lead affects. So I think this graph is kind of an interesting one. There's a few points that I, I really kind of take away is it wasn't until 1986 that lead was eliminated, at least not more than 8% lead was allowed in plumbing. Really, the, you know, lead service lines were discontinued use in, you know, about 1960 typically. Um, Madison, I think they made them all illegal back in like 1923. But to actually, you know, as a code, 1986 is when that, that actually change occurred. Then in 2014, actually they banned all lead in any fixtures or anything in plumbing. This graph also highlights the level of blood, or excuse me, the level of lead in blood. I think the other thing that's a takeaway of this is really post-eliminating, uh, lead and gas. So going with unleaded gas means a significant change in those lead levels. So Stone has incredibly high water quality. Um, we pump the water out of the ground, it's groundwater. Um, we then put it through the distribution system. Throughout all of that, there's no lead in the water. It's when it comes in contact with those lead services is where it actually is, picks up the lead. Um, and then, you know, actually can come to the customer and then they would ingest it. So our system, you know, basically our raw water is safe. There's no issue there from a lead standpoint. It's really our distribution is safe. There's no issue. It's the services that ultimately are the source of the lead. So I think this is an important piece is that, you know, we, we own the water main, we own the part of the service. So we own the service to the curb stop. So that's a shut-off valve that basically we can turn someone's water off. And then from there, it's all into, you know, it's all privately owned except for the meter. The meter is actually owned by the utility as well, but all the other plumbing is, um, owned by the customer. So I kind of highlighted on the bottom there, municipal responsibility, private property, utility funded and grant eligible or special assessment. So that's really where the break is. We talked through the grant opportunity that we have and the ordinance that we created. That's where that separation is as far as what's able to be funded. Um, and then what, you know, basically the utility is responsible for the public side. With the grant opportunity that we have before us, the private side would be then grant eligible. So then looking back at the history of how did we get where we are today? Um, in fact, in 1992 was the first year we actually did lead and copper sampling. We exceeded that year. Uh, we were able to sample ourselves back into compliance. And that's how typically we've always considered this issue is that we've gotten a certain number of sample sites that we have to provide an annual sampling. In the past, it was three years. It then moved to annually. We exceeded also in 2014. We were able to again, um, sample ourselves back into a compliance level. And really that action level is 15 parts per billion. And so where that line is, is we, you know, typically had been required to take 30 samples annually. Those are actually done at the tap. So we, we leave the bottle for the customer. We explain exactly how to take that test. And that's actually after the water stagnated for at least six hours. The idea is that that water is its contact time. So the longer the water sits next to that lead service, the more, um, lead it should have in it. And so then we take, have that customer actually take that sample, leave it out for us, and then we send it in and have it analyzed. If basically 10% of those samples or more are greater than 15 parts per billion, we get into this exceedance situation. It's not a violation, but it does require additional things. So in 2019, we figured, well, we exceeded, um, unfortunate, but not necessarily the time to panic. Uh, felt that we were in a position to sample again. We don't, did always notice that when we did construction within these neighborhoods with the lead service lines, there tend to be where we would have tend to see to have an exceedance. Beginning part of 2020, though, we started to kind of talk with DNR a bit more and they made it very, very clear that sampling back into compliance was not an option. That water treatment was the option and direction that we needed to go. We had, um, actually one study that we had to provide to them related to the corrosivity, I can't say that word, uh, tonight, but the, the ability, basically the higher and more acidic the water is, the more corrosive it is. So therefore then makes the lead more available. So the next step that they shared with us, we would have to do an actual study of our water uh, with different types of pipes and different types of chemicals and determine exactly what, um, how much chemical we would need to add into their system. Our water quality is so good and to really treat all of our water for, you know, uh, you know, most of our services don't have lead. So we've still treating all of our water to address this issue. So during those same conversations and DNR brought forward, there is this grant opportunity. To me, it's kind of like manna from heaven. It really came to a So during those same conversations and DNR brought forward that there is this grant opportunity, to me, it's kind of like manna from heaven, it really came to us at the right time, under the right circumstances. I guess the other piece that I wanted to highlight too is we looked at, you know, sampling ourselves back into compliance, DNR at the same time also shared with us, probably would never be possible. Couple reasons with that is EPA is going to ten parts per billion as far as that action level, you can see by the graph there and showing basically our levels in the past, we've always been over or very close to that ten. We also found that when we were going through our sample sites that DNR had approved in the past, some of those were copper. So they were kind of maybe, well, presumably could have inflated our, or put us at a level maybe a little bit lower than we would be if we were sampling a hundred percent lead sites. So identifying lead, and I guess the one thing I have to say too is I really get very focused on the word lead, it's really also galvanized steel lead. Um, and galvanized steel would be grant eligible, copper's not, um, and really how to be able to tell them apart, obviously copper is the color of a penny. Lead, um, and galvanized are the gray color, if you do scratch a lead pipe, it becomes shiny. The reason the galvanized steel is also grant eligible is where it would be up or downstream from lead. And so any situation where even in the past, so we've done a CIP project, we now have copper, um, upstream. If, if it was lead at one point in time, galvanized steel has the ability to pick up that lead, it'll hold it, and then every so often, it will actually release that lead again, so it's also grant eligible. So, we had done a, a lot of work in the past related to what we thought we had for lead service sites. We actually do an annual report with our, with, to the PSC, and in there, we have to share what we think we have for lead service lines. So through our cross-connection inspections, we've been, you know, capturing that information. As we started to look at actually replacing these, we started to realize that we needed to do a better job, go back through and take a look at our data, because we want to make sure we don't miss anybody. I'm, I'm sure it's possible, there's potentially something out there that we just don't have the awareness of, but we wanted to make every effort to make sure that we didn't miss any, uh, lead services or galvanized services out there. So like through, uh, last year, we were doing hydroexcavating, we also now have done, started a door-to-door, um, effort, so there's fourteen hundred or so properties. We've actually trued that list a little bit more, so about, uh, just under a thousand, I would say, because once we take out the vacant lots and some other known information, we're at about thousand, nine hundred to a thousand properties, we've gotten into about six hundred and fifty of those to date. Um, so, you know, about two-thirds are a little better, we've actually been able to do in-home verifications. And what we're doing there is we kind of took our known list and the known information that we had available to us, but even with that, we're still getting into a hundred percent of the homes, just to double-check, is there lead, copper, or galvanized? If we find that they have lead or galvanized, we are providing them with a packet of information, one of them is an authorization form, a notice related to our ordinance that they have lead, now, you know, a whole bunch of other information, you know, kind of explaining why their responsibility is, where ours is, and all of our ordinances as well. So it's just an example of what that authorization form looks like, we've highlighted it very clearly as far as what the customer needs to fill out and provide that information back to us. So, as of the eleventh of this month, I'm looking at the four thousand eight hundred services that we have, right now, we've got three hundred and sixty-four that are public lead, six hundred and forty-one that are private, here's additional breakdown, this issue, as much as it does seem kind of to a small part of the community, it still really is a full community-wide issue. Because, you know, those lead services, we are regulated to the tap, so we have the obligation to provide clean drinking water to all of our customers. And if we have that issue in our system, we would have to be looking at either replacing them or treating the water to be able to prevent that lead being released into the water. So the grant funding opportunity that we have before us is basically for any properties that are residential, school, or daycare. Um, a commercial property would be eligible if it has a residential component, but if it's resident, or if it's, excuse me, if it's commercial only, it is not eligible for this grant opportunity. When we put in the grant, we actually utilized the numbers we had in our annual report, which was seven hundred and forty-nine. Through our chewing efforts, we felt very comfortable with moving forward with seven hundred lead services, we talked to DNR about it. Additionally, um, we had looked at all the twenty twenty lead service replacements, we actually come in, because we knew about this grant, um, now, starting really in February of last year, but I would say the middle of last year, we really had a good understanding exactly what DNR was going to, you know, put forward with that grant application, and one of the pieces was that they would retroactively reimburse anyone that replaced their lead service line in twenty twenty. As a part of that, though, we had to put together our pre-qualification list of plumbers, which we did, and provided that to any customer that was interested in doing the replacement. With all of your assistance, we were able to create our ordinance and get that in place. Without a grant opportunity, there is a special, special assessment provision to be able to help a customer, you replace their lead service and be able to kind of push that cost over a longer period of time. So, I'm very happy, and I think everybody's kind of gotten the news that DNR is definitely awarding this, um, and that's one of the resolutions that you have before you tonight. So again, to kind of back ourselves back into this, and this kind of plays a little bit into the bidding, and I have to say, there's so many pieces and facets of this project, even organizing these slides to be able to put them in order to share all the information and make it completely in line has been kind of difficult, because there's just so many moving parts into, you know, where that timeline and the piece of information sort of comes in, but this is that graphic back in the beginning that I shared. And municipal responsibility, based on the bids that we've got back and adding contingencies into that, we've allocated or estimate about two point one million dollars. We actually had, uh, in our budget, I think, uh, three point one, um, is what we had put in, but more about that in a bit. The other pieces, we looked at the private side. But looking at all the pieces, so the private side, the bid that we received back, then also those lead services from twenty twenty, and then also part of that, we were able to recapture the cost of create, the ordinance creation. Um, and so that was also into that number as well, approximately, um, three point eight million. So this is kind of a further breakdown of the numbers you're going to see later as well, um, particularly with the declaration, so we worked through the bids, figured out what was private, what was public, and created an average cost per service. That adds in some contingencies, though, DNR allowed five percent on each bid item, we, um, decided to go forward with a ten percent contingency. Also, within those bids, we bid things that we thought we might need, so if they did end up having to open trench, which the whole bid was done with, we will first and foremost try trenchless, so there's minimize any disturbance, but if it had to be open cut, that we had some things like fixing fences and repairing retaining wells, so that's all, also all incorporated into those, um, costs, the average cost per service. Then we estimated seven hundred, DNR accepted that, we used that same, um, they allocation, which was seventeen percent more than what we've had right now that we're aware of. And that then came to those costs, that additional cost for the twenty twenty, um, private service line replacements, and then the cost for the ordinance, and so that's how you get to the, um, basically five point nine in the declaration. So bidding, and again, kind of trying to put these pieces together as far as, I'll, I'll try to explain these well, but the bidding process we went through, unfortunately, we did do the project a little later than I had hoped, however, elated to find that we got four bids. Um, all four very well-known contractors, I'd say very responsible bids that we received back. Through the bidding process, we made it that it's got to be a trenchless technology, if though they feel they have no option but to open cut, they can only do that with our approval. The other thing, working with Public Works, um, recognize the potential impacts to all the, the terrorist trees. So they developed, uh, basically one inch per foot is basically the tree protection zone, so the contractor is responsible to avoid that, also with part of that bid is that we stated they had to locate the services to the best extent possible to avoid any tree conflicts. So on the public side, um, we, we are planning to actually, um, pay for this, or like this, fund this through a safe drinking water loan program. The timing of that is a little strange in the sense that you have a notice of intent to apply, you have your application, and then you also ultimately have your actually loan come forward. So right now, we're kind of in that piece between the, um, notice to, uh, then notice of intent to apply, which we've completed, and then the application actually comes about June, and then with the proceeds of that loan, when it's closed and all that, and will be done basically around the end of the year. So, you know, the timing of this, but we've got that planned out, and that works, and DNRs, we've met with them multiple times. But I guess through that, we still have the two point one million is the responsibility of the utility, um, two point three is here, because that's actually some additional with engineering. But that does have an impact to the rates. The, the challenge, I think, a little bit is that no matter what, we would have impact to rates, whether we chose not to move forward with this grant, have the public side paid for, we would still be also facing seven percent a year, we have to actually replace for DNR, we would still have to treat the water. And so we'd be still in the same position, it would just be spaced over a longer period of time. Just to kind of give an idea, and I think a lot of these numbers are yet to be determined, and Jamin, if you've got any input that you want to share here, we just, from our conservative standpoint, we wanted to take a look at what that impact of a rate increase might look like, we estimated about five dollars per month, um, for a residential customer. Another piece of this, uh, with the bidding was that street improvements, we required that, you know, none of these sites sit unrestored, so they likely will have an excavation if there's on public side that needs to be replaced, there's an excavation at the water main, there's an excavation at the curb stop, that's, curb stop will happen, whether it's private or public. That restoration, including asphalt pavement, has to be done within two weeks. So this is kind of what I was getting at previously, is what if we didn't do this, or what if we didn't get the grant, or what if there was no grant? Is that we'd be facing another study for eighty thousand dollars is the estimate we've got on that. We would have a fifty-five thousand dollar annual cost to actually inject the chemical, that's not even considering what it would cost to actually set up each of our wells with that chemical injection. We'd also then be responsible for, for replacing seven percent annually, and on the private side, that would be at special assessment or just outright cost to the private property owner. And then, the other piece of this that I think makes this grant particularly important for Stoughton, there has been grant opportunities in the past, and we looked at them very hard, but we've never been eligible before. Um, this is the first time where our community's actually been eligible for this type of funding for this use. Um, so it's just a wonderful opportunity, and there is also concerns that they feel that twenty twenty-one will be able to, um, actually fund a hundred percent of the applications that came in. They have concerns that in twenty-two, there will be limited funds. Um, the low to moderate income criteria is why we never were eligible in the past. So private side specifics, grant will cover the private side, but it actually covers is the replacement of that service from the curb stop to the meter, and then in the, with our ordinance creation to look at meter configurations, if the, or if the meter is not in a compliant location, we've got a number of homes that have actually kind of a meter pit in their basement. So in their basement floor, there's actually a hole, and that's where the meter is, in that situation, the grant would then cover to put the meter basically against the wall two feet off the ground. Um, it also covers city inspections, so there'll be an electrical permit and a building permit, and all restoration that's structural. What I mean by that is, so if it's a driveway that needs to come out, or, um, sidewalk, that's all covered within the grant, landscaping, however, um, one, they're not supposed to, they're supposed to avoid trees, but if a tree needs to come out, the grant will cover that. Um, if a shrub, shrub needs to become, come out, that would, the grant will cover that, but replacement is not, so in those situations, those areas will be seeded back, you know, seeded and mulched, and then the contractor is to provide instructions to the homeowner to basically help water and support the growth of that grass back. So, anticipated homeowner impacts, so we've got the homeowner verifications that we're doing right now, we're about two-thirds or so, um, complete with that. If they have lead or, um, galvanized, we ask that they sign on with the program, move that forward so that we can get the work done. My contractor then, at that, at that point, that's kind of where the contractor comes in, anticipate that there's going to be one or two days of kind of inconvenience. One day where they'll come in, just take an inspection of the property, so they have an understanding exactly what they need to do with that site. And the second visit that they'll have will actually be, be to do the construction work. Eight hours is probably long for not having water, I suspect that's kind of, I, I would suspect, though, that people should plan for about four hours where they may not have water, it may be less than that, but I can always try to be conservative and, um, you know, kind of give the worst-case scenario. The other thing that the customer as well as we do is also assist with turf establishment, so you're watering basically the seeds so that it, it actually does grow. Timeline, all this stuff is before you, um, this is kind of a current or relative to, to, to now, as far as the timing of those approvals. Next steps, following action tonight, uh, if you decide to move forward, um, would be basically a pre-construction meeting. So the contractor will sit down with us, will go through as far as what their plan is to move the project forward. Um, they'll provide an anticipated schedule if they're able to provide that, and they also will be providing a hotline number, so there's going to be a number that a customer, say, has an appointment on Tuesday, but something else come up and they need to reach out to the contractor, the question of, you know, what to expect, uh, for water outage, they can reach out to the, um, to the contractor, Monday through Friday, um, eight to four. We'll continue to provide ongoing updates, um, at the council meetings, we, through Facebook posts, we did do a Facebook live event, I have to say, we're doing another one just to redeem ourselves with our technical difficulties, and that's starting late, and then also through our website. Is there any questions? I know it's a lot of information, but is there any questions that anyone has that I can answer related to what I just walked through there?
Yeah, I would just like to, first of all, just thank you, Jill, and, and your team, I mean, this is, this is a huge, uh, you know, achievement to, to get the grant and a huge, uh, project for not only Stone Utilities, but for the entire city. And coming off the heels of, of TDS, which we're still finishing up on, you know, it's been, these are really ambitious projects, which are really going to serve the community very well for many years, and it affects multiple departments, I mean, not only utilities, it affects Public Works, it affects finance, it affects planning, you know, we have to keep track of all the work that's being done, all the permits that need to be issued, inspections need to be done, and I'm sure there's more that I'm missing. So this is, you know, pretty incredible that we're, we're at this point where we can do this, and I know Alder Person Hirsch will have some thoughts, and then we'll open it up. President Hirsch, if you want to go ahead, share your thoughts.
I just want to congratulate Jill and the whole utilities and whole city staff team that got this together, I mean, it's, it's quite a feat, and, uh, it's been very professional and very, you guys are just amazing. I do have one question, because we're trying to do completely lead-free, and I know I've seen this presentation a couple of times now, but for some reason tonight, a question came up, um, with respect to, you said that businesses that have lead are not eligible. So, are we reaching out to them, are they also trying to replace their lead service during this time, so we're completely lead-free, or what's happening to those businesses that are still lead and don't have an apartment above them?
So, I do really thank everybody for their kind words, too, and I, I really can't highlight enough our staff, um, you know, with the door-to-door investigations, the operators are doing the heavy lifting, they're going out with me with customers, making the appointments and making that happen, but really do appreciate everything that you all have done to get us in this position as well. Regina, to your question, we are actually right now with our verification, we are not going to the commercial, because we really need to focus so that we can get that work done on the residential side, but soon as we get that work completed in the area of getting a hundred percent of our residential verified, we are going to start going business by business that's in that area, verify whether they have lead or not, if they do, then we will be working forward, you know, basically sharing with them what our ordinance requires so that we can, because the bidding right now has been pretty positive, I would say, on that replacement, and so would like to get them done this year as well, that will require a special assessment process if they so desire to go that way. We don't think that we have more than ten potential businesses, but until we actually get into them and verify whether or not they have lead or galvanized, I can't say what those numbers look like. Um, but we, we feel that, yep, this is the year to get it done, and we'll take that opportunity, but right now, we're really focused on the residential customers.
I have one, Jill, if I could.
I have one, Jill, if I could. And that is, I think that the, as a Realtor, some of the oldest buildings in town are those buildings, those businesses. And so I would assume that a lot of those would have that problem. And, you know, so that may skew our figures at some point, but I think it's important that we at least address that issue for the businesses and do whatever we can, I think, in this period, in this season of COVID, to support them as much as we can, too. So that's just my thought, because, you know, I think that I've had listings worth lead.
And the terminology reference is based on what we think we have today. Now, to your point, there may be ones that we go back through and verify that they are end up lean lead, but we try to use our, you know, our pressing connection inspections that we've had in the past. Absolutely, we will definitely work with each of the customers to make sure that we can provide, basically, that lead service line as reasonably as we possibly can.
And I just wanted to ditto the fact that you're on top of this, and I think that that's really been helpful for our citizens.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council members before we start going into the resolutions?
Yeah. Just wanted to underline the appreciation for all the work that's gone into this, and get out of my soapbox a little bit. So in the history of the use of lead and gasoline paint and pipes, the health effects of lead were known for several decades before these were banned. And this is really a, it's falling on the public sector to clean up after the irresponsible behavior of corporations over decades. And I wanted to draw a parallel to, say, the fracking industry right now, that there's the same pattern of behavior that they're leaving, abandoning the wells that are no longer producing profitably, or the companies are going out of business and abandoning these wells, leaving it on the public to properly cap them and avoid massive methane leaks. This is something we need to, we need to catch the behavior as it's happening, and then we're not, you know, dealing with this sort of mess decades and decades later.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments at this point? Okay, so we do have three resolutions. Which one would you like to do first, Jill?
I think if you want, we can just do them in the order in which they are, would be just fine.
Okay. And you're going to see that, you know, some of them kind of overlap. And the timing, you know, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts going on here right now. So all three of these went through utilities. So other person, Jensen, do you want to introduce the first one?
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you. Resolution 37, 2021, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Five Star Energy Services LLC for the 2021 lead-water service replacements. Contract 4-2021, and I would move for approval.
Second.
Second, by all the person Schumacher. Anything you want to add, all the person Jensen?
Yes, this was a low bid of 4.6 million. There were a number of good bids on this. I believe Jill said there were four bids. This was the low bid, and they're a relatively new company, but they have a good record. They've done some major work in Milwaukee area, good references. They're well-versed in the process. They have the equipment that's necessary to do this, so I think it's a good fit, and look forward to having them work for us.
Okay. And I would add that there was discussion at Finance Committee tonight as well. Any other questions or comments on this one? Anything you want to add, Jill?
No, I think that's, I think that was covered perfectly. Oh. Sorry, I did think of one thing. Sorry about that. We did bid, when we bid this project, because we were still going through our truing process, we bid 660 lead service lines. With that, with this project, though, we were very clear in our specification, the actual truing, what sites will actually be replaced, will be presented to the contractor. So we've got pricing, the actual quantity, and that's where we kind of talked through those contingency numbers that we have embedded in our monies so that we make sure that we've got enough money to be able to cover these. So basically, this is bid, we shared a list of sites based on what we knew mid-December with a pre-construction meeting, and we'll be starting to move over that information to the contractor, exactly what sites are going to be instructed.
And, Your Honor, I have one other question of Jill. It is if we don't, we don't use all the money that we allocated or whatever, then can we approach businesses that may have lead rights?
Way to look at the grant dollars is up to, it's a reimbursement agreement, you know, arrangement, basically. So they're only going to provide us funds that we actually use for the grant-eligible work. So, you know, as much as it says basically up to 3.8 million dollars, if in the end it costs 3.5, the dollars will only be 3.5. So there's no kind of additional monies that we will be receiving.
Okay. So the issue of businesses is off the table for right now.
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments on the resolution? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? That motion carries. Next one is our 30.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our 38, 2021, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to execute the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement, and I'd move for approval.
There's a motion, a second, all the person Jensen.
Yes, this was also discussed at the Finance Committee before the meeting here tonight. This is, well, I'll let Jill expand on it, if she would, please.
Thank you, Greg. So basically, this is run through, and I think Jamin did a nice job of explaining this piece in finances, that it's a safe drinking water loan program, but it's principally forgiven. So that's how they allocated these grant dollars. So it's basically a loan, but then they're forgiving 100% of that loan. And that's kind of how it reads. And so what you're actually approving tonight is the ability for the proper city officials to sign that agreement. We'll have that agreement reviewed by Attorney Dregney. But basically, that's how this mechanism works as far as getting the grant dollars and what fund they're coming through. And again, it's basically, it's a reimbursement. So as we pay the contractor, we'll then take that information, provide that back to DNR, and then they'll reimburse us for the private side costs.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
We have this one in the agenda as our 38, and the header, it has it as our 37, which I think the previous one is also our 37, so just want to typo.
Typle. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this one? You know, I guess what I'd like to say is, you know, oftentimes, we complain about unfunded mandates. And I have to give the DNR some credit where they were able to step up and help us with this one. So, you know, it's not too often I give them credit for doing that. So I think that should be noted as well. Any last comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. This one here is our 39 is the last one. All the person Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's Resolution 39, 2021, Resolution approving the City of Stoughton Utilities Committee Declaration of Intent to Borrow 2021-1, and I'd move for approval.
Second.
And all the person Jensen.
Yeah, this, again, was something that came through Utilities, and it was approved unanimously. And I guess I'll let Jill speak in more detail on this.
Thank you. I'm going to defer some to Jamin here. If Jamin, you'd be willing to take this, I mean, I think that you've got a much better appreciation for this declaration.
Yes.
Sure, I can just touch on this quickly. This is really just a formality. Basically, all this is doing is declaring the city's intent to borrow these monies later and reimburse ourselves. Technically, this is how the safe drinking water loan applies anyway. And you see with the number here, this 5.9 million dollars, the actual amount that's going to be borrowed by the utilities and paid back over a 20-year timeframe will be closer to the 2.3, 2.5 million dollar amount. But really, to cover our bases with the DNR and the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program, we threw in the actual amount that the utilities plans on borrowing and paying back, and then the principal forgiveness portion of the private side as well. And again, this is just the city declaring to borrow these funds later.
All right. Any questions or comments for Jill or Jamin?
I just have one additional one, and that is, we're an old city. We could get especially hard hit with this because of the ages of our city and the fact that we do have lead pipes. So I'm glad that the DNR stepped up with this one.
Okay.
Also, in the header of this resolution, we've got, as far as committee action, I think you have to add in Utilities Committee approved approval line on here for 322.
Will do. We didn't want to assume anything. Never safe with you guys. Hate to say it. All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you so much. I know it turned out to be a longer meeting on these items, but I think it was work well done and thorough, and hopefully, everybody can understand what's going to happen here.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Sid, what are you doing tonight?
I'm voting no.
All right. Motion to adjourn is complete. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.